Yep.
Public comment, we have the sign up sheet, you're more than welcome.
You want it here or at your regular meeting?
Oh, it'll be for the regular meeting.
Okay.
I should just let everybody know Jimmy is still really, really, really sick.
Yeah.
What do they have?
Uh, well, it is a absolutely ferocious virus that he's had for like two months. And uh, he's having such difficulty with his vision that he can't even read the packet with corrective lenses. He, he is currently at an ophthalmologist. He's got an appointment, I think that goes pretty late tonight, but they're open till like seven. So hopefully we have some, something more definitive, but he just wanted you to know that he's doing everything that he can to get, get well. And you know, I hope to see him, I hope to see him next meeting.
I might have to come cheat out for you guys.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Hey.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, she's like sleeping.
And Dylan, no rush, but just let me know when we're good.
We're rolling.
Okay, all right, hi, uh, it's five thirty and we'll get rolling here with the February tenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, work session for the city of Idaho Springs. And I want to thank everybody for being here. We only have two items tonight, which is a rarity for us. Uh, the first one's a pretty big one and it is the subdivision improvements agreement with the Soak Creek Islands. Nathan uh, is with us from J V A.
Hello.
And uh, we also have Chief Kelly uh, from our fire authority. Should questions come up about uh, the subdivision. And uh, so we brought in the experts and Andy.
And just to clarify, J V A is our city engineer.
Oh, yeah, and thank you because as council knows, we, we do have a lot of different engineering companies that we've worked with. But Nathan is actually our engineer looking out after our news. All right, well, I guess we will kick it off with the first item and that is the subdivision improvements agreement. And Dylan, I will, I'll go to you first to kick it off.
Okay, that sounds great. So I thought I'd start off with just a little background in history to set the context of how we got to today. And then we can dig more into the agreement itself. Um, so Soak Creek Islands was originally approved under the name vertical diamond subdivision. There was a final plat that was approved for that and then in two thousand four, that final plat allowed for forty five single family homes. At that time, and then subsequently went, went through and got its conditions approved and its final plat was then recorded in two thousand six. There was an S I A at that time, so the improvements agreement for all of the public improvements necessary to support the subdivision like this roadways and um, water utilities and sewer utilities and drainage improvements and all of those items. So that was, that was a long time ago and a lot has happened since then. The, the current owners purchased this um, few years back and probably all remember that. Most of you remember when it, there was an attempted upzoning of the property, which would substantially increase the number of units up there. That ultimately was not approved and as such was not under consideration today. But there still was the forty five planted single family homes. And so at this point, in order to develop those homes, we have to agree to the public improvements necessary to support the infrastructure related to.
And Nathan, just to, oh, I'm sorry, Dylan, I'm sorry, just to inject. And we do that because after the public improvements have been developed, the city takes that over, right?
Exactly, yeah, so ultimately maintenance of those facilities, the roads and whatnot would fall to the city to, to maintain. Um, so. And what was I saying, so the agreements involve all of those public improvements that I kind of mentioned. It also, so what we're kind of approving today is are the improvements listed in the agreements and the conditions in the agreement and whatnot. Are they suitable to develop all of the necessary items that will have to be built? And if the plans that are preliminary at this stage are not, don't show a certain element that needs to be constructed. And as I'm going to one of those items, we can drain and improvements and stormwater runoff, that sort of thing. Does the agreement and our conditions protect the city, if you will, to ensure that they will have to be built according to city standards?
What's your opinion on that Dylan? Do you think that this, that that is in that, that document that we're protected? That everything that we want to get done, that's within our code requirements now would be, would happen?
Sure, so Carmen and Nick did, did a lot of the work on writing the agreement and reviewing the agreement and putting conditions in place to make those protections. So I think at least from like an added in staff perspective, we've reviewed it such that if this agreement were approved tonight, we put conditions in place and S I A um, sections, the language will.
They can't go forward unless this is done, basically, okay.
Right, and so I think the questions that I would present tonight based on our experts like Nathan from J V A, Paul and Kelly and Dylan from Fire Authority would be. Do we, I think there's some question on whether the experts believe that, like, for example, the cost estimate is sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I'll let, obviously, to those things, but I think the way we've written it, staff would have the authority and the means by which to ensure that everything that needs to be built would be built before any home could be developed or ground could be broken.
Do you mind if I ask another question, Chuck?
No, in fact, Kate, I was gonna encourage that question maybe to be broadened out to Nathan, who's with us tonight.
Sure, um, my other question is, why is this coming to council? Because my understanding is that this is a two thousand four agreement, however, we made changes in twenty eighteen. I was still on planning commission when that vote of two hundred homes plus was voted back down. We, we've said that there's no way that road as it is structurally could handle that much traffic. So why is planning commission not reviewing this? I mean, it to me would be, this needs to go back to the drawing board since it's, it's sort of starting over with some new rules in place.
Sure, do, do you have to, it's just, it's a council decision, really. I, like, if your ultimate direction here was the planning commission has to see it, then.
Is that an option for us?
I guess so, yeah, but it's not a requirement. And I think the reason that, and I did present this to them last week as an update item to get inputs and feedback and all of that. But all of the, from a planning perspective, the subdivision, the final plat, all of that, for this particular development is already approved.
Certain place.
And normally, as we saw in two thousand four, two thousand five, that period, that the subdivision improvements agreement would go hand in hand with that. Because, you know, you want to build your subdivisions, make all those improvements. In this case, because of the kind of long and winding history, it hadn't been built. And so some of these improvements necessary to build what was approved back then have changed. You know, we can't just go based on the two thousand four plan set because that was also, you know, then added it.
Right.
There's different engineers in place and things like that. So if you go based on that same one, we have a totally different set of preliminary plans. So in that sense, from a municipal code perspective, there would be no, like Nick says, no requirement that planning commission review because there isn't really a planning. In my opinion, I wrote all of this, of course, but it's all based.
And I think you did a good job. I think you, you guys really worked very hard, obviously, on this.
But, you know, I would say like, none of this really is based on my expertise, really. It's based on everyone else's.
Right.
So in that sense, it's not, even though I'm the planner and I reviewed it and I wrote it and all of this, none of the recommendations are really based on my planning expertise.
If I may, uh, Nathan, do you feel the, this is adequate to protect the city?
Uh, well, I, I believe that, you know, there, there, again, there's a long history here and I, you know, from, from our perspective, from an engineering perspective, we've, we've got a plotted property that is zoned a certain um, type of zoning that, you know, allows for building construction to take place. So I think we feel that, you know, we're not here to really dictate, you know, when and if this is constructed. It's just, are we meeting the code and are we complying with the necessary precautions required? Or at least, you know, to be put in place prior to in-depth construction to be started. And I think that's where we are here today to kind of look at this subdivision improvement agreement to, to um, basically conclude whether or not it's, it's viable for, uh, to move to the next step. Um, from an engineering perspective, uh, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the direction that, you know, we're primarily focused on. Um, we, we do feel like there is, there are several missing components to the design as is. We would like to see addressed. Uh, however, I think, you know, going back to the, to the report, um, there, there are a lot of stipulations in there. And I did read the latest and greatest, um, with some of our concerns addressed that, uh, obviously, you know, we are encouraging that those, you know, certain protections are in place before approval. And I think the biggest concerns from, from our end are, you know, that we've got a lot of infrastructure to improve. We've got some uh, steep roads, uh, we've got some, uh, and certainly we've got some drainage concerns that, uh, I think that's probably the number one for us right now, that we don't feel have been adequately addressed and explored from the engineering side of things. Now, on the other hand, though, we've, we've got a flat a piece of property that we understand has some, you know, challenging constraints to it. You know, it is mountainous terrain. Uh, you are, you know, you're, you're relatively confined to the plat that you're given in a sense. And we feel that several of these items can be addressed uh, with, with further engineering. So we do think there is, you know, a light at the end of the tunnel for complying with these. But at, at this current stage, I think we uh, don't feel comfortable with saying the, the plans presented as is with the estimate um, to accompany those plans truly encompasses the work that needs to be done to address some of the concerns.
Thank you. Um, but in addition to the many things that Nathan had listed.
Sure.
When I took a look at these plans, the uh, ours, water system, uh, many of the properties that are on, you know, on the, on the development are actually higher in elevation than any of our water tanks are. So if they were to tie in to, say, one of the lines, they would only be able to get our higher pressure line. They would only be able to get adequate pressure and flow to those bottom ends of the properties. And I didn't see anything in that exhibit that would take care of those, uh, or in the list of improvements that would take care of that.
And, and the plans do, the building plans do contain opposed pump house and then down the lower in the vicinity of the existing water tank up there, the city water tank. But the um, as far as I could tell, and I think Nathan moved reading and Ed moved reading, it's not clear size, I guess, or what, so I'm not sure at this stage, at this preliminary stage, what fire flows and water pressure and what could occur. Obviously with opening to making sure that you meet those adequate items, but I think that adds points. If it's not of a sufficient size or something like that, that may impact the cost estimate more than, or we're just not sure how much it would affect.
And so that is not adequately reflected in the process that's presented as so.
I think that, that's what.
That's what Nathan said, yeah. This is a really bare bones utility plan that they have there, I mean, really bare bones.
Like if a hundred percent is a full utility plan, what percentage would you put this at?
Maybe in the twenty twenty five range.
We got to see over here, that's the.
Maybe in the twenty, twenty five percent range, because it's really not accounting for, like Ed had pointed out, it's not accounting for those pressures, those, those head losses. They don't, they're not tying into near the tank, but tying into a line that enters a fault that feeds that tank. So um, we have a hundred psi there. They don't have enough to, to supply water to that property above that.
So with that, what does that do for fire, Kelly, if they don't have enough pressure? Like, what happens if there's a fire up there and they don't have enough pressure in the water?
They have to provide for it, so they have to engineer that in.
Is that why?
Well, a tank would be the most.
With the cisterns, like each property, I mean, under Montane.
We're upsizing the Montane to seventy five thousand to help provide additional fire flow because the current one does not.
Right.
Uh, they would need, they would need something of approximately the same size, you know, to put in for this community.
And that's actually, a million is what we've got in the grant, isn't it? For the Montane tank, it's actually gonna be two?
Yes. That's today's dollars.
No, we just right now, today.
Yes.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to satisfy both of us.
And your concern is other, there's probably more, what, what would your be, what would your concern be, Kelly?
That would be the biggest concern, the rest of it is, we've reviewed it and gotten what we asked for over the years. And it's, you know, we've, we have purchased four wheel drive engines so we can get out the road. They carry a thousand gallons of water.
Even with that eight point two five percent grade that they're estimating?
It's, it's better than many, many areas that are incorporated, right? We're looking at places that want to do eighteen percent of the driveways.
It's insane.
So it's, it's not bad. We have the equipment to take care of. Agreed to put in fire hydrants every five hundred feet, which is incredibly amazing because we don't get that in other places.
Right.
So they have.
As long as you have the water pressure.
Yeah, they'll have to figure that out because they have to supply the houses, the domestic as well.
They could supply domestic with a pump, but uh, it'd be a very large pump to try and, and supply water for a fire flow. A very, very large.
Isn't this similar with what California just went through? I mean, they didn't have enough um, pressure to put out that many fires at the same.
Nobody could possibly.
No, I, I, I understand that. Yeah.
So a water tank is the most cost effective, productive way to, to do it. That's gonna cost them a bunch of money, so.
That's it.
See if they fit, are able to make that work. And that's a seventy five thousand gallon concrete tank that's going in up there, a Montane replacing a twenty five thousand gallon corroded stupid tank. So it's a pretty significant upgrade uh, for them. And uh, I think there was a belief uh, when we did the grant presentation that it was very worthwhile. And uh, you know, so we got a fifty percent match on that.
But without the fifty percent match, at this day and today's dollars, it's two million dollars that is not accounted for in their cost estimate. And we're just, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm best casing it right now.
But there's other things that need to be modified as well, so that's the same.
And this doesn't have to be down to detail on another plan. We just, we, they need to be able to account for these things in, in this uh, infrastructure plan here.
And you would say this is like bare bones, like?
It really is bare bones.
And I would say, you know, I was talking to Nathan earlier, you would certainly wouldn't have an a hundred percent construction drawings at this stage. You know, I, I don't know enough to be able to say what you might typically see, but.
Be able to account for all your implements. So you should be, you know, even at a thirty percent or a forty percent stage, should be able to account for your water tank, your pump house, your uh, fire hydrants, um, you know, where on the mains you may tap, that, that can be up in the air, it doesn't really matter. You, you'd uh, signify, or you'd have a line there signifying that there's a service line there somewhere. Um, and it's kind of the same for the sewer, you want all those things accounted for. And these are like the big ticket items, so you're gonna have detail changes in all these things. The bend at one of these turns in the roadway, I mean, those details will change. But all these big picture items should be accounted for in, in the very first um, rendition of, of plans. All right, uh, Dylan, uh, anything further, we going through this?
Sure, so I think what I just briefly wanted to touch on was kind of the items that I think it definitely needs and then basically the items where there's discussion, which we've pretty much touched on already. So broadly speaking, there's, there's four things I would say that are worthy of discussion and maybe, and again, the way we've written the document, or we would be covered if we did say, you know what, we know that, we don't know what the water pressures will be and how much tank will cost, but we've written it in where that will have to be provided. So, so anyway, the four things, we talked about two of them. One would be the water tank, water pressure, fire flow and that, and the like, pump house. Um, the second would be that Nathan mentioned with drainage and runoff infrastructure. Um, about a year ago now, or over a year ago, actually, January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, Nathan had um, provided a number of comments about wanting to see drainage improvements and the like. And that's what we wrote into this section twenty seven of the improvements agreement. The recognition that there are preliminary plans, they're not gonna have all of the drainage improvements figured out and all of the tie-ins and everything figured out yet, and that's fine, they will have to do so and update the cost estimate suitably to reflect any changes that are needed. Um, so we're, we're covered in that respect, but as Nathan mentioned, there really is not much consideration of that, that drainage. So I think that their engineering team knows that it needs to be divided. The question is, what that ultimately will look like, because I don't think Nathan, am I correct to say you really haven't seen much to review? Yeah, I, I think, you know, kind of going back to Paul's point too, you know, the thirty percent set of plans or, or wherever we call them, you know, we expect to see, you know, conceptual level things, but generally the intent is there. And if, if it can be proven that it's gonna be, it, it's all feasible, then it's, it's not, it's kind of a, uh, it's not an issue. However, you know, we've, we've certainly identified some of the concerns in the past and at this stage, we don't feel like those have been properly addressed. Obviously, the, the water infrastructure is one, you know, there is a pump station identified on the drawings. However, uh, it, it's not to the detail that you would really need to, you know, determine a cost estimate from it. Uh, whether you're doing a tank or a high flow pump station, there's a very big cost difference between those two. And same to be said about the, this, the stormwater and the runoff. Our, our concern is that, you know, there, there needs, you know, well, I guess we realize that a full onsite um, detention system is not necessarily feasible, you know, when you're building into a mountainside like this. But we are still, we are altering the, the landscape and we're going to adjust the flows. We're gonna isolate certain flows that will impact our downstream neighbors to some extent. And we haven't seen any real effort put forward to address those downstream concerns.
downstream concerns. Um, and whether those concerns are happening at the end of the project, when everything's said and done, or if it's if it takes place, if we have a storm event in the middle of construction and uh you know, roads are half constructed, you know, we could have a uh we could see a major runoff issue that has, you know, big ramifications to not just the neighbors, but you know, the whole stream ecosystem downstream. So um I understand that uh there's a lot of engineering left to do, but you know, we would like to see um some due diligence put forth on uh showing potential solutions. And I think that, you know, based on our previous conversations with their engineer, uh we we have been open to uh you know, to discussing some of those options, knowing that it is a challenging site.
Of course.
There are limitations to what they can and cannot do. Um, again, we just haven't seen that, you know, we've exhausted some of those options and and proved that they're uh not feasible. So, yeah, we'd like to see some additional um drainage infrastructure. We've got the the, we see the general um storm infrastructure that you would see, but no real, you know, attention when it comes to, you know, slowing down the water or preventing future erosion issues or um sediment issues downstream.
Great. So then the other, I guess, topic of discussion perhaps is this included the packet of variance summary. That's on page five of my report. This summary of variances were actually approved with the final plat back in two thousand and four originally. So when the original subdivision improvements agreement was um drafted, it included all these variances. And talking to Nathan and you know, correspondence with our other referrals, largely speaking, our, from a technical standpoint, he didn't as staff have issues really with any of these conditions or variances. The only one I wanted to note and I put a condition in the um report to remove is the second variance summary and the explanation for that is in the report, but essentially it states permit reduction of roadway width from twenty six feet to twenty feet curb to curb for section of Pine Slope Road from intersection of Soto Creek Road to driveway at Station Seventeen plus twenty one point six one. And the reason I proposed to remove that is simply because based on their proposed preliminary drawings, they're no longer proposing to upgrade this portion of Pine Slope Road. So the original approved plans show the road, I can pull them up, but um they're included um in the report. Basically, it would come down off of the subdivision, make a sharp curve onto Pine Slope Road where the existing residences are and then continue down that road and out onto Soto Creek Road at the southern entrance to Pine Slope. However, the current plans as proposed for improvements would have the access coming in at the northern end of Pine Slope Road where the hot springs is at that northern access point. And so that whole stretch between southern point of Pine Slope Road and the intersection north of all of the existing homes is no longer proposed to be improved as part of this subdivision improvements agreement or road width and paving and the like, because they're going from the northern end. So this variance doesn't really make sense anymore. And so that would and at the time it was, you know, it's quite a narrow road. You really can't expand that section of Pine Slope beyond much more than twenty feet because of where existing houses are and the like. With the northern access, there's perhaps not those constraints. For me, there still are, but this just the way it's written specifically concentrated about anything. But as far as the other variances are concerned, I don't there was no negative uh like city response to any of these. For example, you know, Kelly, you already mentioned the eight point two five percent grade and how that's pretty sufficient. Um, you know, one of the other ones is a allowance for no sidewalks on either side of the roadway. That's pretty common in it's kind of more rural subdivisions, I guess. Montane is an example. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of other places in the county, Floyd Hill and whatnot, that don't have sidewalks and it's relatively low volume road. It may be worth having share the road signage or something just to to indicate the presence of pedestrians, but I think staff in general was relatively comfortable with these variances as they were written back in two thousand.
One of the issues prior to the three hundred homes or whatever that were going to be put up there, one of the big concerns was the traffic and I think it was the traffic in front of those homes. If they improve the north side, do you think all the traffic's going to go on the north side? Because I think some of that overflow is still going to go to the south side.
I think it would be impossible to say that there would be no traffic impacts to the Pine Slope Road where the existing residences are, just because naturally some people are going to go wherever they want to go. But for the sake of comparison, if you were to take, let's say I'm coming from the transfer station south, my two choices would be to turn left onto Pine Slope, rot, drive this pothole rich gravel road, you know, I think fair to say that has some drainage issues and the like, is maybe only sixteen feet wide or twelve feet wide in places. Or I could just continue down Soto Creek Road, turn onto a twenty four foot wide paved road that's rated out to eight point two five percent. Some people, of course, will choose the gravel road because they'll maybe it's a little shorter, but if I were driving up there, yeah, it probably wouldn't be their choice.
But there's no guarantee.
Shh, of course, yeah. And I think no matter what happens, maybe, you know, I I suppose um I've talked to some folks who live on Pine Slope, there could be city action where we put up signage or something saying local traffic only or Pine Slope residents only or something. It's really not enforceable. You can't really make it a like making it a one way doesn't really make sense either for the residents of that road. And so.
If they don't know that local only signs don't work anymore.
Right. So it's the sort of thing that I don't really know what the solution is, but it also is the sort of thing like the topic of discussion is not should they be able to build forty five homes on these platted lines because that was decided, you know, twenty years ago. Um, the question instead is at what point are the plans and the cost estimate or and the agreement suitable to ensure that all of the necessary subdivision improvements are built? So I would let, you know, I think we all would want to figure out a way to protect the Pine Slope residences as much as we possibly can.
Well, that's a balance because these people also are property owners. Like I am very much protect our residents, but I'm also if you are following the laws, you're able to do what you want with your property. I'm very big on property rights. Um.
Within the.
Within, no, within the guidelines of what is appropriate and what is legal.
Well, I mean, getting the opinion of the homeowners up there, I mean, maybe you dead end that road, so it's only one way in and one way out. And then the north access is only for the new subdivision. I mean, I don't know, there's.
Just like so.
Residents would just.
What the residents would like, you know, so listen to the residents.
That's kind of public safety, so I can't.
Yeah.
So I I think if you look at this, if you're willing to improve the existing road, basically from the hot springs up, which is terrible on the best day of the week. Um, to allow essentially allow two way traffic on the road, which has never occurred. That alone helps the city and helps the residents up there because that's the biggest tolling up there. Um I think that my issue with approving any of this stuff at this stage is there isn't a water tank, there is no long term one. Um pump stations are great. Um, until power goes out and a couple of events occur. And then you have no fire flow. So I think no matter how you do it, there needs to be at least something needs to come through the engineers. This is what it looks like.
Right.
And this is what we anticipate, but then I think the other drawback to that is they need to work with the city because they're going to have to discharge water from that at some point back into the system. So what does that go through? So Ed doesn't have a problem there, right? We do the same thing on on Montane right now. We have a certain amount of water that goes tower that system back into the system. That's how we move water. That needs to be engineered by a water engineer also. At least in some conceptual way, that they say, yes, this would work or no, this is not feasible. I think all of that seems to happen way before uh approval of of something like this. And that is that thirty to forty percent concept. That's all the stuff is really important. The rest of the stuff is there. I think sedimentation plan is important. Like, are you going to have it captured and and separate out sediment long terms? We need to paint at least three or four ideas. Um, and that's if that's not, I didn't see it, think plans are like that either. So all of that needs to be done way before we reach the stage where you go, yeah, you're you're good to move forward with design. And we know there's costs and inherent costs of that. And I think the issue we have is we approve this as it is right now at a twenty percent. And then lo and behold, we start playing the what we didn't know would be this expensive game. Right? I think that's the next phase. And then they're back, not picking anybody, but they're they're back here before us going, well, well, we'd like to meet all the requirements we agreed upon. We can't afford it. Are you willing to give this concession, that concession? And we start playing that cycle.
I think we've already played that game.
I think we have too. Um.
Not with this particular.
But just in general, right? But I'd like to see something that's a little more comprehensive upfront that we can go, yeah, we can check certain boxes that are key, public safety boxes are important. Um before we we did. So I don't think we're there. I don't look at the stuff, I don't look at the big plans, I have access to it. That's the stuff. I thought the roadway is good. Um, the hydrant space, all that stuff is, they've been really upfront with, yeah, we're willing to do all that.
And why weren't they, my question for that would be, why weren't they willing to provide greater detail? Because I'm with you.
It was pushed uh uh initially, right?
This is a, this is an old.
So we look at twenty years ago, there are things that happened here twenty years ago that weren't pushed and pushed down, right? We're we're a lot farther ahead now than we were twenty years, maybe ten years ago. And I think that's part of it. And I appreciate you would you take the time with as on, you know, the day of time for us going, hey, we really need to see some stuff, hint hint, right? I've been on that side of the fence too, like I'd really like to see twelve things they could do it. When they don't do it, I know it's frustrating. And then Ed's doing the same stuff going, man, I'd sure like to know what this looks like, when this looks like, this looks like. He doesn't get it. Which that's when it comes to us to say, okay, staff is good with eighty five percent of the staff says, yeah, it's good. The fifteen percent we think is critical, critical to staff, critical to us. Therefore, until we get to fifteen percent, we go.
I don't think we're in a place where we can approve this because
That's.
Exactly what you're saying. But also they they Nathan says they asked, they mentioned a year ago, hey, we'd like to see this. And for you not to present that to us sometime within that twelve months. Like, this is a, I mean, I appreciate this is a tough area to build in.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but my concern as a councilperson is you need to demonstrate that you understand that this is a tough area to build in and you are cognizant of what's already here and what do you need? And this to me says they they said, no, no, go ahead and approve it and make us do it and then we'll do it. But I worry about what you said, which is we approve it. And then they're like, yeah, well, we can't do it.
And is this still diamond back to the change company, isn't it? Or did you set a plan with somebody new?
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was like that.
John.
They are not diamond back plans. Although I haven't done the plans. I think that's just kind of my issue with this. Do I have an issue with them building them? They're not, if they meet all the requirements? And we can do stuff, go forth and and do great things. As long as they can come here and say, yeah, we've met the requirements at this stage. We guaranteed it will meet the requirements before it before us. I don't, if they've had a year to figure out some of these little things. They're really rudimentary civil engineering stuff that should have occurred a long time ago. Their water engineer should have been able to calculate, hey, our pump station looks like X.
And that makes me concerned for moving forward.
Because costs are to a pump station are either expensive or really expensive.
There's no.
There's not a wide variance between, right? Because we have to protect backflow and all that stuff that goes into that. So they should have some idea what that costs. And if it's not reflected, then they need to do a little more homework. Just to make sure they want to go forward with this because it affects the cost per unit.
So Jimmy, doesn't this sound like more of a a conversation that wants all these things or like we have to get these in place? Doesn't it go back to planning commission?
I don't think it goes back to planning commission. I just think we need to, we need to set forth a little bit of um like a threshold. We need like a a threshold of the design needs to be at this at this level and approved by staff, which includes our engineer.
Right.
When they come back and say, yes, we think they've hit the thirty percent threshold and the things we've asked for are there. Then we can also make sure that it's written into the agreement that says, we approve the agreement with these thresholds continuing to be met, right? These, we will do these steps moving forward. And I think we're just too early.
That's telling too, the staff did not say they approve.
Well, I I guess my concern is this. It it seems like council has now taken on, even though I I agree with everything you you said, but it feels like council has now taken on position of planning commission when obviously the initial two thousand and four plan has to be modified. Those modifications should go back before the planning commission for approval and then back to us. Because we, us having this discussion about water tanks and pump, you know, that's not really in our our wheelhouse. At least it's not mine anymore. So I don't feel like and and not only that, but council doesn't necessarily have the time that it takes. I've been on planning commission meetings, we've sat there for four or five hours on one topic and still did not get to the end. That really is for planning commission to have those knock down, drag out conversations with a developer. We are not, like you said, we're not here to decide whether your development is good or not. I'm all for development within the realm of of possibility and what makes sense. But it's not really for me to like hash that out with the with the planning commission. I mean, I'm sorry, with the planner and the developer, that's for planning commission to do. That's my personal opinion of not, you know, whether we do the vote tonight or not. I think whatever happens should go back to them.
And I think if we look at it to go further, this is the two thousand and four approval, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Um we've got a whole bunch of code changes that have cursed us in.
I'm not aware of all of those.
State of Colorado changes then.
Yep.
There there's a whole stack of things and they're not the same as they were then when it went to planning commission. So I agree with if that's the best way to do is put it back to planning commission, make sure we get all the boxes.
Well, they're the, they're the ones that are on top of it. I haven't been on planning commission in three or four years.
Ask to have it come back through the loop because it has, it has changed. Um, the rules have changed since the original approval. I do agree with that. There's a ton of things that are different. Now that didn't exist, they exist now. Um, and our water system is different than it was in two thousand and four. Right? All systems a little different to improvement and stuff that went into now. So I support you the direction. Whether it's no approval with a list or it goes back to finding commission, either way is, I think, the right path.
Okay. I would go for no approval of the list. Specific about what we want to see if this is good. And I would like it to go to planning commission because there are changes and make sure it meets twenty twenty five standards. Not just two thousand and four.
Uh, Janine, your thoughts?
Yeah, yeah. Processing, but um I think, yeah, we need more detail. So I don't know what the best way to move forward is, but that seems to be the right path. Let's get a more detailed plan.
Holding my comments to the end, but uh please. And uh Jeremy, anything further?
No.
Scott, your thoughts? Well, I think with the world that we live in with fire safety right now, I wouldn't want an event to happen up there and we didn't do everything we could to protect that subdivision and people that already live up there to the best of our ability. And I mean, liability wise, I don't know where that falls, but.
It's just a lot of discussion. I mean, like I said, planning commission meetings, I don't know what they are under Dylan, but they were long and hard. And so I think the big questions need to be asked of the people that are most up to date on what's happening. And that is certainly not, not not me anymore.
All right. So uh I just want to share with you, um, my thoughts are that uh uh tonight, one of the resolutions at the regular meeting was going to be a uh a a motion to conditionally approve. And it just, uh, I've sat back and listened to what all of you had to say, and it doesn't seem like we're there uh with any kind of a comfort level to accept uh conditions. Uh, I think most of not all have felt that way. I'm not asking for any kind of a vote. I'm merely suggesting that uh we don't uh necessarily have to say yes or no uh at this point, but we can always table this uh until we have uh some better information. It's also, I believe, honestly, I don't think this developer was trying to pull anything past us. I think that, you know, it it doesn't hurt to ask what what more we would need, you know, to approve it with conditions. So it would give them an opportunity to hear what what would make our our staff more comfortable or our our engineer be able to uh say that a a staff recommendation would be uh for yes, you know, for example. Uh, so anyways, uh just after hearing from everybody, I think that might be the best uh, the best path forward on this. Um, I would ask staff anything uh further?
Well, I think that the one thing that we haven't heard from is the developer who is here. I don't know that we would like to give them a chance to perhaps respond.
I think that would be a very good idea.
You know, like that and perhaps should have.
I I would love, love to hear from them. And uh any uh, any uh, any thoughts?
Well, I was just going to say before we close uh this item, I think it would be good to review. Well, I was just gonna say before we close, uh, this item, I think it would be good to review. The outstanding items that we've covered here. And the the condition.
Yes.
And I would just like to make sure that that staff and the developer have are have a fairly good sense. I think we do already.
Of course.
What council would like to see. Uh, when this is brought back and and at what what level. So I would just ask that before we proceed.
Let's, uh, yeah, let's, let's use our time right now to go over, uh, those items. And, uh, then we'll ask, uh, for, uh. Mr. O'Malley and and anyone else that he would like to, uh, to address, uh, council on, uh, to to speak to this.
Well, I have a mind, I made a list as we were talking, the stormwater and drainage infrastructure. Because I want to see what's going to happen going downstream. Um, the pump house and water flow pressure as well as fire. You got a fire event, and that right away needs to be. Like, it says in here, the developer has not provided evidence of an agreement. That needs to be addressed also. Those would be my three things.
And, uh. Nathan, I would, uh, call on you just to, uh, I know, of course, uh, that, uh, drainage was, uh, one of your, uh, uh, major concerns. Uh. And, uh, anything, uh, further, uh, that would set your mind at ease?
Yeah, I I do believe those are kind of the biggest items, you know, obviously, those are the ones that get done the most, but yeah, the the water infrastructure. Portion and, uh, again, there is. A little bit of detail shown there, whereas I think the drainage infrastructure is severely lacking in some of the. Uh, control measures that are needed to, uh, properly construct a subdivision of this magnitude, so. Those are probably the two biggest items, uh, from the engineering side.
She Kelly, is there anything further? Would make you feel, uh, more dis?
I don't know if this is. Proper place to put it, because it would be. Based on building material. Uh, we've learned a lot with the Hawaii. And the, uh, certain Californian conditions. We've learned a lot with. Protecting buildings and communities and. Uh. You know, it's pretty wide open up there. There isn't a whole lot for vegetation that's an issue, maybe on the peripheral area around it. But the, uh. Consideration of hardscaping rather than landscaping. Uh, consideration of resistant. Siding, uh, currently we have with the county. A requirement for a, uh, type A fire rated roofing systems. So that stuff that lands on a roof doesn't cause a problem, but. Uh, something we're gonna have to look into and. Especially with further code adoptions, the the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface Code. That addresses those issues.
Good point. Uh, Paul? Paul, I just wanted to see if you had any, uh, uh, concerns?
Nope, uh, just reiterating what, uh, Nathan had also said, um. Uh, we do need something as far as the. Uh, storm drainage goes, you know, we need to know where that water is going. After it's collected in this neighborhood, uh. And, uh. And water supply, so, uh, as far as, uh, fire mitigation as well as, uh, domestic water use. You know, um, having a pump house down there without a generator. You know, having an appropriate sized tank would allow you a certain buffer zone of of how long power could be out before it really. So those two big things for me. The, uh, storm drainage and the, um, the the water supply.
Uh, Ed, I'd like to hear from you. Anything, uh, further?
I thank you.
All right.
Can I just, uh?
Nick, please.
Just want to get. Just to clarify for the path forward here. Um, it sounds like really the issue is. Uh, an elimination of some of the conditions so that. Information doesn't come on the backend. So much as being, uh. Presented, you know, tonight or in the future, it sounds like. Um. I I just want to. Get clear direction on the planning commission piece of this. I, like I said, they're not required and. Really aren't handled this process code wise. And I want to see what the temperature of the room is for, you know, if. The conditions of approval were whittled down and it was a more. Clear plan. If it could come back here or if it's still, the direction is still. There's gotta be another planning mission, because really it's more of a. Staff evaluation of the, you know, plan that's brought to council than it's that, planning mission, council.
Nick, I would agree with you, uh, you know, we we don't have enough really, uh, to approve this with conditions, because there's. There's still too many unanswered, uh, items, uh, but. Uh, I would just say that, uh, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'd like to. Go around the table here and see what the comfort level is.
Okay.
If we have adequate. Uh, you know, conditions that we could actually vote on. Lisa, I'll start with you.
So my question would be, and this is maybe a question to Nick, um. How much change happens before a planning commission needs to look at a plan? And say, oh, this plan is not really approved, we do need to take a look at it, like what? How much change that happens before that protection is kicked in for the city?
I I want to say, well, subdivision itself. Has not changed. And that's what gets approved by planning commission back with the flying the plat. I think. So, you know, there's, there's no need for a replat, there's no need to change.
Sure.
Anything on the property, which. And so the subdivision improvements agreement, in my opinion at least, from a legal standpoint, goes along with it because the city ultimately has to say. We agree that this is what's needed, and we will accept it once it's built. And so. That's why. I mean, I mean, ultimately, everything gets action from council, but that's why I think it kind of goes to council is because planning commission can't really say, yeah, we. Feel like, I mean, they could say, we feel like you should accept those improvements.
Or they can also say that we we think that you can't. I mean, they can also have disagreements within the 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 design of the, of. The, I guess they, like you said, they've already said yes on it, two thousand and four, but if any of these, any of that. That, uh, design has to change because of drainage. Or where the pump house has to go, or anything like that, or even how the roads configure, would that not change the actual?
Well, then you'd have to do subdivision amendments. You have to amend your subdivision, go back to the planning process, which would have planning commission, but.
But we don't know if any of those things are going to happen yet, do we?
Uh, sure, but ultimately, it's not on. Planning commission to say, hey, you're gonna have to replat this. It would be on the developer to say, we can't meet. The rigid constraints of which this original plat was approved.
So planning division does like the original plat work.
And we would do.
And we would do a plat update.
If it was needed, but there's no evidence to suggest that it's needed at this stage. That would, of course, have to go to them, and so I suppose. Cer- certainly, I'd be happy to.
Is it a big deal like it, I mean, I know it's another meeting, right? It's another, at least two meetings for planning commission. Is that that big of a deal to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed? If if there's big changes that you guys don't feel, like, you know, but then again, then it has to come to council for, like, are these big changes that? We feel that need to go back to planning, so one way or the other, there's gonna be an extra meeting for.
Well, what I would say is.
Moving forward.
If. With this additional information needed for drainage and the water system. To the water tank, water pump, et cetera, and drainage things, if they, if ultimately it's decided, well, we can't meet the requirements of the code. But if we modify the plat to eliminate a lot of clean open space lot or. Reconfigure these few lots, something like that. I I don't. I guess what I would say is, I don't, planning commission wouldn't have to make that decision. Staff would certainly make the decision to say, well, if you can't meet the subdivision regulations. To build the subdivision as plaid, change the subdivision. Uh, as far as expertise goes, planning commission certainly is more. Attuned on a regular basis to pour in through with a fine tooth comb, you know. Documents and reports and. Plans and things like that, so in that sense, perhaps it could be valuable to council to have. Them pour over it after staff has. So in that sense, um. That would be. That would be fine with me, certainly. It's the, I guess ultimately for me, it's the same amount of work either way.
It is.
It would be adding additional work for.
For planning commission, yeah.
I'm sure they would.
Well, would there be a, a second set of eyes that would be helpful to you? You feel like?
Maybe they would bring up some stuff that. Or maybe they would discover some stuff.
Yeah, this is where we also send the stuff off to JBA for review, so we are getting that second set of eyes. By saying it's engineering for review.
We're paying JBA.
I know.
We don't pay, we don't pay any planning commission.
To be fair, I don't even, I mean, when's the last time planning commission even saw? But that's.
There, there hasn't been a subdivision that.
I have not seen one in my entire career on planning commission, ever.
There hasn't been a subdivision besides like a minor subdivision where all the infrastructure already exists. There hasn't been something requiring an improvements agreement since this was originally approved. So it's not a very common element, and the last thing I'll say is. Even with, you know, the the report written and the analysis and all this, like. I'm not an expert on any of these improvements, so from my planning and background and expertise, like I could say. You know, I have. Things to provide, of course, but I can't provide nearly as much as Paul or Kelly or JBA or Nathan could on this. Exact thing, because if they can say. We believe all these are met, then I would say, yeah, hey, they believe it's all met, so I recommend approval.
So that's the solution moving forward is. To avoid going through the planning commission delay?
I don't.
If to set something that says that when I go through this.
I just wonder what we're doing with the planning commission if we're not utilizing them, that's all.
Well, to me, it sounds like the planning commission has done their job on this plat.
Twenty years ago.
But is there, and I'm not sure this is the right terminology, but statute of limitations, is there any kind of? Thing like that that would?
There's no like. Requirement to. Keep them. In this process at this point.
It seems, it seems like we add a complication level. More if we involve the planning commission, to me, as long as we have experts reviewing what needs to be done. And as as something I wouldn't want to. Put on a developer just to delay the project.
I I think. You know, I think it'd be fair to say now that you, this group. Has more. Of of the ability to look at an SIA just from this meeting than what the planning commission has right now, just because they've never seen one.
Yeah, it it seems like to me that, uh. I mean. They're entitled to build forty-five homes. If we can have, uh, conditions met. It's just that even experts that look out for us. Don't really have enough. Go on, um, so. If it not, nobody is saying here that everything has to be a hundred percent. But if we could get it to a a higher design level and satisfy them where they could make a recommendation, then I. I feel that it probably would be appropriate for council to move on. Uh, but just going around, uh.
I'm gonna, uh, obviously, I think I'm getting outweighed here, but again, I'm just gonna, uh, reiterate. We have to involve planning commission at some point in time at the end result, you know, on on all things, and I just think this is a very old. Um. Project is, it's actually gone from a lot of reiterations over the, over the twenty years, and I just want to make sure that they are comfortable. Cindy, I talked to today, Cindy Olson is the chairperson, she seems comfortable with it, so I will, I'll I'll concede to whatever you guys want to do.
They did get an, uh, an update.
Yep, yep.
At the last meeting, they just. You know, they didn't get asked to recommend, you know, make a recommendation on.
Did anyone express any concerns or comments or?
Um, Ed showed up and expressed his concerns with the, uh, overflow issues.
Cindy's the only one that's on that has been on since two thousand and four.
She recalls.
That's the only one that's.
It's kind of, it's kind of a struggle, I think. What? Still talking about this?
And, uh, Janine, ju- just to keep going around the table, uh. Your thoughts?
Um. I don't feel strongly either way. It seems like it's maybe a little more straightforward to just bring it back to council.
And, uh. Jeremy?
Oh, I think we can lay out some conditions and have some staff satisfied with the conditions are met. I think it's a time to move forward with the project.
Scott?
I feel that they could bring it back to us with their recommendation. Unless there's something that comes up that they feel differently on.
Yeah, yeah, honestly, I I feel the same way. Uh, and, uh. I, uh, I have a lot of faith in, uh, the folks in in their departments and our engineer, uh, looking out for us, so. Uh, anyways, I will, uh, I will lend up. Uh, amending our agenda tonight, uh, to table this for, uh, reasons that we've discussed. And, uh. Uh, anything further, uh, from staff before we move to the second item, Andy?
Uh, do we need to date certain of the tables? Or et cetera?
And I, I know, sorry, I was thinking that, uh, that would be at the the regular meeting if 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 you'd like, uh.
I know, yeah, I was, I, we can discuss at the regular meeting one right now, what to do there.
All right, I think, uh, I think we we have time. Uh, Mr. O'Malley, and, uh, we'd love to hear from you. And if you'd like to ring anybody else up with you, uh, we'd love to hear from them too.
Okay, uh, from here, from there.
Oh, please, come on up. Uh.
There's one more chair, I need to, to my, my partner, um. My wife.
Your wife?
He's here.
Hi, I'm Charlie Keeter, I'm the, uh.
He's our engineer.
Yeah.
And.
And I'm Nancy Jo, O'Malley.
So, I am Kevin O'Malley. Uh, most of you. Have seen me sometime over the last thirty years. Uh, that I've been involved with. The county and. For the last eight months, we bought this property seven years. With the city. Uh. I think, I want to thank. Dylan, and and I do have a question for him. Um. He and I have been speaking back and forth for the last several months. And. My intent to explain, this is a bit of a question. Is. Whatever he tells me. He needs for you. That's what I do. Uh, we are not, we have not. With the plan as it's been presented. There is not one change we've made to. Try and make it easier for us to, you know, take off. I mean, I, that may be too strong a statement, uh, but. We certainly haven't tried to. Reduce the requirements. It's more. What's required. And then we'll go find out how to do it. And. When we came five years ago, six years ago. It was the intent to do something different. That was not approved. So, the multifamily housing. Uh, so. It's not our intent. To do anything other than what was approved. Uh, and and just go forwards with the plan that was. Uh, set up twenty years ago and. Bring it up to today. Because things are different. I spent eight years as a commissioner. Um, helping the county update. All of their things, so we're, we're not trying to. Sneak under the radar in any way, shape or form. Uh, we had a plan. That plan did not get approved. So. That's out. We're just trying to go forward with what you have approved, and Dylan has been great. Um. The, you know, the old mean guy has not raised his voice once.
I'm surprised not to hear. No, but did, was this meeting helpful and kind of aligning what you needed to, what you need to know, sort of?
It is.
Okay, and Charlie can explain a little bit about why we have, we're only at thirty percent of.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's complicated, right? I mean, it's a, it's a major subdivision development, has serious infrastructure components. Everything that you guys have talked about, we've talked about, uh, with JBA, we're like very aware of all these issues, so. Um, getting the plans to that comfort level obviously is going to be the next step for our group. But importantly, it was. I I, you know, typical process, the SIA would come at the end, when everything's embedded and engineered. But importantly, it was, I, I, you know, typical process, the SIA would come at the end, when everything's embedded and engineered and designed. I know in this situation, you know, there's a lot of soft costs that go into the development of these plans. When you have a mile of roadway, you have serious structural retaining walls, you have major water sewer sanitary infrastructure in place. It costs a lot to do that. And so the, you know, from our understanding, getting something kind of on paper to help, um, the MALLs get funded to be able to afford some of those soft costs, there you have to pay geotech, structural engineers, myself, you know, the list goes on. And so the intent was to get the plans to a, a place where the SIA could be approved and they could go and receive funding to help pay for some of these other soft costs that are coming up. So that's, that's why you have, you know, essentially a twenty-five percent set in front of you now. The fact that we're getting feedback to where you can get to a comfort level is, is exactly what we need. So if you're saying, we need X, Y, and Z, you know, that's something that, you know, as a, a design team, we'll have to go and make sure those concerns are addressed.
Was that communicated to you, uh, when you first talked to JBA? Because my understanding was JBA said we need greater DTL some time ago.
We, yes, we've talked probably over the last year about a couple of different aspects. But, um, I don't know, we, I mean collectively decided to push forward the SIA, correct?
So we were told that we had enough to get the SIA and then we can get all the, you know, a lot of money.
All of the, you know, everything that was brought up this evening, where you were saying, well, where is this, where is that? We're, uh, completely aware that those things are part of this process and they have to happen. Our understanding was that it was okay for this to happen first. And then with step by step by step by step that you go through before you come anywhere close to making out your first piece of dirt. And so that's why we've done what we've done. If we misunderstood that, um, you have my apologies. Uh, but I really don't think, I don't think we did. I think what we wanted to do was open up this conversation so that you know a couple of things. One is we're not trying to change anything uh, that has already been approved. We're not trying to, we're not trying to redraw lines, we're not trying to add numbers. We're trying to take what was approved. And it's probably more viable now than it was even in two thousand and six, just because the way the world has changed. And we move forward with it. So this was the next step for us to take. And this has really been helpful for me to hear the people in this room talk. You know, and say what they're thinking and where they're, you know, where they see the need of what needs to come together to allow this to unfold. Uh, you can, you can spend a heck of a lot of time, heck is not like any of that. Uh, you, but you can spend a heck of a lot of time trying to anticipate what people think and what's important to them. You can't really know until you sit around the table, you know, and so we wanted to get this conversation started. Uh, I think, uh, Dylan's been trying to do a dance between how, how do I allow that to happen? And still make sure I'm doing what's necessary for my people and his people are you guys. And so you you wanna get it to where we become and have a conversation. And then go from there. Uh, and it's not see if we can go forward. We're gonna go forward. We're with your permission, when it is appropriate. We're gonna build those homes. And they're gonna be beautiful. And they will be a very nice addition to the city. But they're not going to be well, they're not gonna be big giant tanks. They're, they're going to be more expensive than any of us would have thought five years ago. But anything, anything is more expensive. They're not gonna be out of line with-
The architecture will be, it's like-
Yeah.
I'm looking at it as, you know, property tax for, for I don't spring. So, I mean, I'm good with that. I hope that, uh, nothing I said was something you think that I don't think that your, your development size, I think, is appropriate for that area, as long as the infrastructure will meet the, will meet the demand. I mean, that's really where I'm at. And it sounds like you've guys got a plan. You're gonna work with Dylan, you're gonna work with JBA, and you're gonna work with our staff to get it, to get it going. And I, and I, with the, the council obviously thinking that doesn't have, have to go back to planning, that'll expedite it, I think, for you guys a little bit as well.
Yeah, I, I-
I just have a passion for planning commission, I-
Yeah, I, I-
I just don't want them to get lost in the fray.
You know, I can in there, stand there, but, but, yeah, we're just gonna let it happen.
Yeah, let it go.
Uh, we're, we're, we just wanna build something that makes sense. I'm not a developer.
Not yet.
But I, I'm very good at hiring people to help me do things. And to accomplish my goals. Very good at figuring out what I'm needing.
And you helped us figure out-
And you guys, I, I came away from this with hell of a lot of things.
So can we move forward?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
But, so, anyway.
Thank you.
That's, you, those who don't know me, no, don't ask me to say something.
I just started.
Go ahead.
Uh, um, just to get further clarity here, um, I think it's fair to say that, you know, there's six conditions in this, uh, staff report, just, uh, a, apart from the conditions imposed by the SIA. It really sounded like all of the concerns tonight boiled down to sewer and water related items. And none of these other conditions caused much concern. Uh, I'm just wondering for purposes of when we're gonna see you again, do you have an idea of when? You know, you submit updated plans and-
Well, yesterday.
Are you gonna put me on the spot?
That's why I brought you.
I, I would really prefer to have the mayor move us to more of a date certain, like we're the first meeting in April, or, or July, sooner or later, and
I'd like sooner.
Yeah. Do we have to respond right now? I would need to look at the conditions, because if we have to hire another subconsultant to say, do a water analysis, I don't know their timeline. So I can confidently say, yes, April first is-
That's fair.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
But I can, after looking at the conditions, have a really good idea of what that scope of work is and relay that to the MALLs and, and give you a definitive yes.
Okay.
And also, I guess, you would, I would assume that JBA would wanna look at these things again-
Oh, yeah.
Prior to that, so, you know, the schedule would need to kind of backname and schedule it to backtrack, so.
If it was continued to be date certain, this probably is not great decorum, but I guess if it wasn't ready yet, we could continue it to another date certain, that-
Thank you, more comfortable next.
Yeah, I, we could, I, I'll give some more thought on how to structure the motion, even now in seven.
Having a target, even if you don't end up meeting my target, having a target is-
That's what I was saying.
Deadlines are always about, you have those.
But if, if we just said tonight, first meeting in April, that's fine.
Yeah.
Start like, it'd be one.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna be exact, yeah, or earlier in the month.
Yeah.
First of the fifteen, somewhere in there, or not the first.
So hypothetically, we could say that a resolution of rate series twenty twenty-five will be a con- uh, continued, uh-
Till our first meeting.
Or in April, for example. And if, if that date needed to change, we could do that.
Okay.
So the engineer was saying that, you know, I know it's a financial commitment to go further with the planning, looking to try to get funding, investors, whatever. But once you get to this point, that's gonna bring such a better level of clarity to the project, because we use the word complexity and we're in-
Yeah, I know.
And so you wanna, you don't wanna get to a stumbling block before you wanna find that out, I think.
Before you go from-
I think it's best for the city and the developer to kind of move to this level.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
We're, we were, we're trying to check things off. Say, you gotta do this, or you did that.
Well, this is not an easy piece of property.
No.
It's not an easy accident, like-
There's a lot, there's a lot of error, yeah. We, I, I would say there's, there's been a lot of engineering done. It's not represented particularly detailed. But we have figured out, like, base foot of retaining wall, like we, we oriented the roads the right way, like, we have a really good understanding of how it's gonna get to put together, but getting into the details is obviously, um, what, what is needed for you guys to, to get to that comfort level, which we can do, so. We, we have a comprehensive list, kind of, of, of these things by the end of this meeting, or tomorrow, or as soon as possible, great.
I've been taking notes.
You've been taking notes, okay, good. I didn't take any.
So, so now she gets to tell me what to do. Along with me.
All right, uh, any further, uh, direction needed from staff? Or questions of the applicant?
I think it's been pretty clear on how to turn these conditions into just, uh, checkbox, just the level that needs to get there to be comfortable. I don't think it's an incredible lift for, you know, we are on further one, from chatting with JBA and chatting with folks, but, um, so I don't think.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm clear. Me and Nathan are on the same wavelength about, you know, we do this a lot, so I know the levels of effort, it's kind of just getting us to that, the happy meetings.
All right. Well, I wanna thank, uh, I wanna thank everybody and their, their effort and, uh, looking forward uh, at seeing you, uh, probably, I should say, tentatively, uh, in early April. Thank you very, thank you very much.
And there's, Kelly's no longer here. And they may just be out in the hall with her. But he, you know, he has concern over, uh, materials and things. And in my mind, uh, these homes will be as fireproof as they can realistically be.
Sure.
I didn't live-
Metal roofs and-
I lived in the mountains. I, you know, it's just over a ridge, but-
I mean, it's actually, it, it can be very architecturally beautiful and it's not as expensive as some of the stuff that they're using on the outside of houses that is more flammable. So, yeah, I mean, and it has that mining look to it too, that kind of mining, I know.
They're, they're to be-
Yeah, that's awesome.
Spire proof is a new home thing.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot for coming, guys.
All right, thank you.
Hey, John, I have a question. I, we, I think we're supposed to want to sign up for public comment based on this?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have everybody that would like to, uh, to talk, uh, and, and by the way, the applicants, welcome, uh, to, uh, to sign up as well at the regular meeting. Uh, everybody will have three minutes uh, to comment, if, if, if you'd like. I just wanted you to be aware.
I think you've heard enough from us.
The list is-
That's very-
No, thank you for saying that.
I just want to know that you're, that you're right.
It's no interest in it.
Right, it's just that-
Yeah, it's, it's non-responsive.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
I, you know.
But you can always watch that on video, that's a beautiful thing.
The last thing, uh, and Paul, your timing is perfect. Uh, the last thing on our work session is names for parking lot, trails, and bridges. And, uh, Paul actually gave, uh, I thought, a pretty good, uh, kind of, uh, overview of, of what we've been dealing with right now, you know, like numbering bridges and things. And I just wanted to remind council, uh, I felt like there's been a good amount of work, although a lot of these names have just been uh, not official, but we always have the ability to keep something unimaginative, like bridge number seven or number eight, and turning it, turn it in at some time in the future, uh, to, uh, Dorothy, Dorothy Dykman Bridge, or, or name it after, after somebody, uh, that has quite a bit of, uh, of, of meaning here in our city. Uh, it, it may be forty years from now. Uh, but, you know, we can always reserve, uh, some of those things, uh, for, for later. Uh, Paul, your thoughts?
Well, uh, as going through Google Maps, there's segments of our trail system that are already named by Google Maps or somebody, so, um-
You can go in there and do that, actually.
That Big Five segment is already called Big Five Trail. The segment through, uh, the Water Wheel is, sorry, the Taylor Water Wheel Trail. Um, and this is just breaking the trail up in, in order to better facilitate some, um, some description of where a problem is.
Well, it's somewhere on the bike trail.
I think it makes perfect sense. The only thing I, that I, I thought, because I liked your animals, it sounds like we've already kind of gone with the animals, but I, I, I agree a hundred percent. I think we should go with some, like, heritage names. George Jackson still is not represented in this town, people, and it's driving me insane. Can we have a George Jackson parking lot? I don't even care. Bathroom, whatever. I think George might not care, he might care, but I don't know about you. But you know what I mean, like, some historical names, some, um, then of course, the ancient history, we still have ancient history that, you know, the youths were here. There might be some chief that we haven't recognized on a small portion, you know, that's, but the animal names, I think, are great historical names as well.
Is this more for like internal naming or were there-
Should be signage, right?
I'm looking to get some signage out there, because as we have people on the trails and they see a problem on the trail, they need to be able to identify kind of where that problem is.
Yeah, that's good.
You kinda need a name on it, but you also need to put in, like, a mile marker for some of all the trails as part of the process.
We do need a mile marker. Sure, yeah.
It makes a huge difference in some areas.
Well, if you have an accident.
They have something to tell us.
Yeah.
I love those skills, dude.
For the Greenway, there's a effort, I guess, across the entire Greenway that runs all the way from Wheat Ridge up to, I guess, Levelland Pass, to try to coordinate more on that, so they will eventually, as part of this coordination effort, put in mile markers through the whole stretch, so I'm wondering if we can, or I can help, because I'm on the board or whatever for that group, to see if we can get like a specific mileage for it, with the caveat that some of it's not built yet. I guess we could internally just put mileages for our town, but eventually they'll say, well, mile twenty-eight point-
You could just spray them for the, for the time being, Dylan, just for on the, on the ground for safety purposes.
Yeah, mile marker, poster signage would be very-
It's not expensive.
No, and, and we're gonna have more bridge numbers than mile marker posts on those things, so.
I like the idea of, uh, town historic as well as ancient history. I like the, and parking lots, I think that are quite-
It kind of goes with the theme that goes up and down the valley.
All right, so, Janine, what do you think about, uh, animal parking lots?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as you spell cougar correctly on the side, Paul.
Did I, did I misspell it?
Yeah.
That's spelled in a yard, it's in a yard. This is about one hundred foot below. I know how to spell it, it's just where my finger went that day. I'm sorry.
And, uh, Jeremy, are you feeling all right with the animal names?
I'm good with animal names, a lot, I'm pretty willing to change it, it's something different.
Okay.
Absolutely, that's, everything's really flexible here, guys, there were just names on it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, I do think there's some, can we start talking about it, art, something George Jackson-y? Just a statue, anything, I don't-
We certainly can.
I really, really, really-
I've got the rock.
And right now, we have Big Rock.
A rock, he's got a rock, he's got a rock.
But nobody knows where the rocky is.
It's not even a golden rock.
It actually is not, no.
It's an ugly rock. George's gotta have a rock.
But, uh, just, uh, to get Paul rolling on signage, uh, is everybody all right with these tentative names? We can always, and, and again, like a lot of these are bridge number two or four or eight, you know, and we could, uh, name a George Jackson bridge. It, I would suggest it's relatively easy to change that from bridge number- I would suggest it's relatively easy to change that from bridge number seven to the George Jackson bridge.
Wouldn't even have to change, honestly. Uh, the Dorothy Dykman Bridge would be essentially number two. It's still going to have the designation number two bridge, but it'll have, it still has a Dorothy Dykman name there.
Right, exactly. Very simple. And, and again, some of these we may intentionally want to leave, shall I say, open just because
With the Charlie Taylor Water Wheel.
Future, future councils, future generations may have somebody that's very important to them, that they would like to name. One of these out.
You know, the Silver Spruce segment they came up with, just south of, of that segment, something along the bike path is a parcel that's called Silver Spruce. And that section that I was referring to is Young Ranch. Uh, that's because it ran through a segment of Young Ranch that we, we got a, an easement through. So that's how they ended up with their names.
Well, Young Ranch is actually, it's kind of a historical name too, so that's been there for quite a, quite a while.
I like the idea too, if we can get an idea of our mile markers, even if it's not built yet or.
Yeah, sure.
What I would suggest there is we, at least for now, just use the mile markers that we have on the interstate. Because we, we have exit two thirty-nine through exit two forty-three, and those are based on mileage approximately. So I think we could certainly put mile markers along the Greenway that coincide with I seventy, and that'd be very good for public safety as well.
And Andy, I'm not being argumentative, I'm, I'm honestly just wondering out loud here. Dylan, with the Greenway numbering, do they already have like sets of, of like mile markers, if you will?
I don't think so, because the whole stretch in the canyon is like, the mile markers will change slightly because they don't know.
I, I, I'm just wondering if, if that's something that would coincide or.
I'm not sure how they'd work that out, because I believe there are, there are mile marker, markers along the canyon.
Right.
Six through the canyon.
Right, oh yeah, I've seen.
You've got that, that setup, and then you've got the setup for mileage on I seventy. So you've got the trail coming up through the canyon with mile markers, and then you've got the segment on the interstate.
Alternately, I think what they will do, and because it's not all built yet, some of it's conceptual. They want to have like, wherever it starts in Wheat Ridge, I think it is, would be zero point zero, and then they'd have, like, they, they modeled it after, and they're working on some branding stuff at the moment. And they'd model it after that where, you know, perhaps for the first few miles when it's in Wheat Ridge, it's like a light blue color and it goes one, two, three, whatever. And then once it hits golden, it would switch to a yellow color.
Yeah.
Golden and then, so they would go from zero all the way up, so we might be like mile twenty-six point eight to mile thirty-one point two or something, I don't know. So we would have obviously a pretty rough estimate to say like clearly we're within these milos, but we'll probably want to be more exact than that perhaps. So maybe doing something in the interim, because that's probably not going to be a full and complete project until the whole canyon is built.
It's like twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine.
Anything more needed?
The other thing I wanted to say is I, I would like to have Paul and Dylan coordinate on this, the signage. I think this is a great idea with the local signage.
Uh huh.
But there is a very concerted effort right now with Jefferson County and some other municipalities, Booker County, to standardize the branding and the, and the signage, where, you know, like curve ahead, yield, stop, all along the Greenway. And my guess is that might likely be ready to actually be implemented, probably not this year, but next year, just from the updates that Dylan's giving me on that. But right now, the, the branding is likely going to be Clear Creek Trail, is that what we're hearing?
Right, as opposed to Clear Creek Greenway or Peach to Plain.
Plains.
Um, so we've got that, and then, but they're already considering some of the local considerations, like the color of the signs, things like that. And I think it would only make sense for us to put some local touches on it like is proposed here. But I just want to make sure it's coordinated with the overall branding, so that makes a lot of sense. Right now, our signage along the Greenway, Clear Creek Trail, is kind of a hodgepodge. You've got some big signs, small signs, we need signs some places, we don't have them other places, so. And it'll be a cost of that, but we could probably get some assistance through this effort of doing the, you know, the four miles through our city, getting it all standardized. Maybe make that a project for next year or two.
And I actually think that it will be quicker than twenty twenty-six, because the collaborative has
Parts of the Canyon are supposed to open up this year.
What's that?
Or parts of the canyon, but they're supposed to open this year.
I think, yeah. But the branding effort, they're going to have conceptual drawings for, moved by the collaborative board like in spring. So then if it's pretty, then obviously we would all take it back to council and some, our council reports or whatever and say, hey, here's the two proposed branding ideas or whatever. Do we like it, do we hate it, what are the comments? So I think it'll probably be mid, middle of the year, maybe, that it could be here for, and then approved. So it could be pretty quick and obviously for the parking lot signs, that's, doesn't have anything to do with the trail. So unless we're trying to kind of create more of a coordinated citywide signage plan, then obviously I think we could go ahead with all of that.
Why don't we, wait until it starts growing?
Easily put some pretty basic mileage marker in signage that is pretty neutral, I'm sure, and then it would always correspond well. I think the branding is more for like, you know, a sign that talks about like rules and maps and things, and also like the signs that, you know, Clear Creek Trail this way and this way, and follows throughout the city and all that. So if we had a sign on a bridge, that's not gonna.
All right, so we, we have enough direction for now? Uh, Paul, you all right?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I know there was some suggestion about like our, do you know, inner signs down here in the downtown? Did you want to do something a little more decorative with a few of these signs?
I've heard that, I've heard that request. I've heard that from people that they would like to see. I was like, well.
Something more inviting.
More inviting, but I'm like, no.
I put do not enter on Wall Street.
It says do not enter, and people still turn down there, so I don't know if like, do not enter needs to be less inviting, but that has been the request.
Okay. Okay, we'll make sure we have skull and crossbones.
All right, dude. One hundred percent, especially right now.
I just want to remind members of the audience, if you would like to speak to council, please sign up, would love to hear from you. And I want to thank everybody, it is seven, and we will, we'll convene our regular meeting here.
And one last time, members of the audience, if you would like to speak to council, would love to hear what's on your mind, please sign up for public comment.
And we're live.
All right, thank you, and. I want to thank everybody for coming to the February tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular council meeting for the City of Idaho Springs. And we'll call it convened at seven oh eight. And I'd like to start off with roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Here.
Jim Clark. Lisa Manful.
Here.
Janine Mariani.
Here.
Kate Collier.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Here.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Here.
All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, that's not mine. We have an agenda before us tonight. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda for the February tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Janine, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Kate.
Oh, we need to make an amendment?
Yeah. Uh, no, actually, I will do that when, when we get down to that item, but thank you. Any discussion of the agenda? And hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest? All right, hearing none, I would like to move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Kate, and do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. Any discussion of the minutes? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we have some bills before us tonight. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bills to February tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Jeremy, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Janine. Uh, any discussion of the bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, I would like to thank members of the public for your patience, and I would like to move to public comment. Uh, I would like to ask, do we have anybody online for public comment? I'm, I'm certain we have members of the audience that have signed up. Thank you, Andy. And everyone has three minutes, and please understand, this is our time to listen, so there isn't back and forth with council. But we very much would like to hear what's on your mind. I'd like to start off with Judy Murphy and say welcome, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Judy, can you just state your name and address for the record, please? Judy K. Murphy, six thirty-nine Pine Slope Road. Thank you. These are Soder Creek Island's concerns. We realize that since the property is owned our one, there's nothing we, the residents of Pine Slope Road, can do to stop the development of the Soder Creek Island's property. However, we do have a best interest in this area, and most, most of us have lived here quite some time, and have constantly improved our properties. Our biggest concerns are water runoff from the new development down onto our properties and possibly into our basements and living areas. Currently, it is not an issue due to the undeveloped land being able to absorb that runoff. With the addition of paved streets, driveways and homes covering the majority of the area of the land, the land will not be able to absorb that snowmelt and rain anymore. Number two is sewer line construction. We understand a proposed new sewer line will come down from the development just to the south of six thirty-nine Pine Slope, my house. and continue north in the middle of Pine Slope Road. And we understand the developer will have to provide connections to the existing properties at the edge of those properties. The current sewer main will be abandoned in place. We are concerned about the length of time that egress to our properties will be interrupted. Number three, has there been a traffic study on this property since the proposed development has changed from the 374 condos and townhouses to 45 single homes? With the addition of plus or minus 90 automobiles in and out of the area twice daily, does there talk to the traffic light at the north intersection of Pine Slope and Soder Creek Roads? Of course, we're concerned about rebuilding the north end of Pine Slope, but I need only that the city to worry about. We have asked you, we are asking you to be very diligent in making sure this development adheres to the rules and regulations that the city has and will set forth for the development of this property. And I heard, what I heard tonight, I feel very good about. I know you're looking out for all of us. And then one last item, you may or may not be aware of the history of Indian Hot Springs. Before any buildings were ever built on the property, it was the annual meeting place of the youth in the Arapahoe tribes. When they traveled, it was not a five-man delegation like most things are now. The entire tribe traveled. The land that will be building on was undoubtedly where they camped and hunted. I would ask that you contact the Bureau of Indian Affairs and see if they would like to search the land for artifacts before any development is started.
Judy, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I would like to welcome Art. Thank you for coming tonight, it's good to see you.
I don't know how to follow that, Judy, so look at your thing. I'm Cattrell, 637 Pine Slope Road.
Thank you.
Idaho Springs, Colorado, 804 Pine.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah.
Judy covered most of it. There are concerns. First of all, I was concerned that our lawyer here kind of boiled it down to a couple of items. I think it's more than a couple of items, and I would like to expand. One of them is the water runoff during the construction. That really hasn't, wasn't addressed. I'm sure there's, our engineer will address it. But it has to be, before you get to where the water's going to run, what are you going to do with the water while the construction is going on? And all the dirt has been moved and changed and what have you. So I think that's a very big concern of ours. Also, when we talk about the sewer being connected to the sewer that's already there, there's been, over the years, we've been told that that sewer is our responsibility, the residents. Then we were told, no, it belongs to the city. So I would like to get that clarified, because if it is ours, then there's some things I would, I would address, knowing at that time, if it's ours or if it belongs to the city, to go ahead and just dig up the road and rip up that sewer line. I would like to, you know, address it when the time comes. If it's not ours, God bless, and we'll go from there. Also, as far as the traffic is concerned, I believe the last time we went through this ordeal, the builder did agree to put up a gate at the, just before the road turns where the mobile home is, to provide privacy, not privacy, but less traffic for the traffic going back and forth with us. And there are, you can put up a gate with solar, police department can all have the codes, so there'd be no reason for them not to be able to do so. That would help with the traffic, because as it was said in the meeting, those people are going to go down the dirt road. We get a lot of traffic down the dirt road considering how few houses is there. We get a lot of people from Indian Springs just looking, hey, why go see what's going on up in this old dirt road? So we do get more traffic than is anticipated. And 90 cars go to work, come home, go grocery shopping, go get the laundry. It would be quite a bit more traffic than I think was addressed at the meeting. So those are my major concerns, and I listened to Mr. O'Malley with all due respect. I believe that he should have come with more specifics. I believe they came with what they wanted to give to you. Hopefully, that maybe we might miss something. That's just my cynical outlook on life. Academy Awards are in April. I think I'm not interested in the award. And the designated for, you know, insisted, but truly, I really believe that there's a lot of things that really need to be addressed and we have to cross the t's and dot the i's and make sure we attach what we think the financial cost will be to fix those things, because I know they're going to come back saying, no, we can go for less. And one other thing, the tank at the top would be what, how many gallons of water?
So for that many homes to supply, it was calculated out, so to supply 1,750 gallons per minute for two hours, it should be somewhere in the 210,000 gallon range. But we can't have a tank up there that large.
Right.
So we truncated it down because we do saw some push from the system side as well.
Okay, well, that's my point. You know, there's 45 homes up there. How long can, how long, how long can the fire trucks pour water out of, right, 45 homes? That's it.
Thanks, Art.
Hey, Art, thank you.
I said what I said.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Margie Marlin, welcome, please come on up.
Hello.
It's nice to see you.
I'm Margie Marlin, 633 Pine Slope. And I, I want to start by thanking you for the conversation that you had earlier. Really relieved a lot of my stress about what's going to happen up there. It sounds like you guys are really considering everything and, and holding them to the fire. So I really appreciate all of you putting your effort into that. And they've already mentioned what I'm going to say, but you've covered everything else that I was very concerned about. The traffic across the road. And so, yeah, we live on a bumpy old gravelly. It's not gravelly, it's dirt. And so every car that goes by there causes more housework for everybody on that road because our houses are very close. So you're going to up the amount of traffic just gently going across there. You're talking about a lot of air quality in our homes going down because of the dust coming through. So I would like you to maybe consider the gate, like Art was saying, or even paving that part of the road so that it isn't all the dust coming into our homes, because we're going to, you know, have an increase if you don't do one or the other. That's all I really like. I am really pleased with you guys. I am so glad you are council members. Thank you so much for doing your job as well as you are.
Well, thank you, and I just want to address everyone where council appreciates you coming out, giving up some of your evening. It's never easy to come up and speak publicly off the cuff, but thank you so much for doing that. And it's important that we had your feedback on this issue, a good or bad. But thanks, thank you very much. And I just want to double check, we don't have anybody online? Okay. All right, well, thank you, Dylan. That will conclude our public comment. I don't believe we have our finance officer with us tonight, although she did spend much of the day here.
Yes.
All right. I would like to make the next motion, and this is something that I was asked about at the start of the meeting. I would make the motion that Resolution Number Eight, Series 2025, be postponed to a tentative date of our first meeting in April so that we can have a better understanding of the conditions.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. And any further discussion of this postponement? Hearing none, yes?
That date is April 14th.
Oh, thank you. That puts a finer point on it to April 14, 2025.
Once we determine those conditions, can you send council the list of those conditions or can we see those? Boy, I think it would be, we've kind of discussed, most likely it would be the list that you saw minus a few.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. We will move to ordinance first readings, starting with number four. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number four, Series 2025, and ordinance annexing to the City of Idaho Springs a 1.99 acre parcel of city-owned land within the J.J. Elliott Plaza located in Section Two, Township Four South, Range 73 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian in Clear Creek County, Colorado, known by address 839 Colorado Highway 103.
Thank you, Jeremy, that was an awful. Do I have a second?
Second, Chuck.
A second from Kate. And any discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up is ordinance number five. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, ordinance number five, Series 2025, and ordinance zoning the 1.99 acre parcel of city-owned land within the J.J. Elliott Plaza, located in Section Two, Township Four South, Range 73 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian in Clear Creek County, known as address as 839 Colorado Highway 103 as residential REIT.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. Any discussion? Hearing none, I would just like to point out that this acquisition was only made possible through a very generous offering and understanding with a Mr. Al Brown about permanent deed restriction on this property so that we will have senior affordable housing, something I know is very dear to our hearts. So anyways, Al, if you have me watching tonight, thank you. And with that, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. We have one ordinance second reading tonight, ordinance number one, and do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number one, Series 2025, and ordinance amending rates and charges for water and sewer service and making conforming amendments to the Idaho Springs municipal code.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Janine. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Nick, thanks for coming up in person tonight. Very glad you were, you were here. And I just wanted to check in and see if you had anything further to share with us?
Nope, glad to be here.
All right, well, thank you. Andy, thank you for your report. No request for action tonight. I just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further?
So one thing I want to highlight is a question from council at the last meeting or a request that staff get follow-up on the reason that our application for the grant for the pedestrian bridge was not approved. And due to the recent events at the federal level, those debriefings for the applicants have been postponed. So if they still have an opportunity to have a debriefing, we'll certainly do that. But I just wanted to counsel mention that at the last meeting, and I wanted to say we, we were intending to do that, but we were informed that the debriefing was postponed for now until there's, it's just postponed for now.
And Andy, it was a little surprising to me. I did not realize that we had six times the request for financial support than they actually had money available.
That's right.
So I'm sure that played a huge part. All right, well, thank you very much. And Guy, good to see you tonight. Thank you for your staff report. Wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have a question. Andy, did we determine a retreat date yet? Or we have dates up there?
We haven't. Be glad to bring some suggestions back to council and upcoming meetings and get that set.
That'd be good.
Good.
Fridays still seem doable?
Yeah.
We have a few options on Fridays.
Are you going Friday? I can begin.
Okay. We'll shoot for a few Fridays maybe later in the spring.
All right, sounds good. Dylan, anything to share for us tonight?
I just wanted to mention that I had meant to put together a pretty comprehensive kind of planning commission update for the month, but I did not get to it at this meeting, so it puts the calendar at the end of the month.
All right, okay.
I mean, hats.
Thank you.
Can you wear at the same time, Bill?
Thank you, we will, we will look forward to that. And Wonder, very important. I thought that the financial update was particularly telling because we are 10.83% up. And even though that says February, that actually is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wonder, but isn't that like November 1st through November 30th?
I think it's typically about a two-month delay.
So it could be December 1st through December 30th. And my point either way is, that was a full month for us to have the bike park open. And as many of you know, we set an all-time record last year with $378,000. I mean, it was time for pop on a bottle of champagne, right, at $378,000. We came in, again, at a very slow time of the year, at $408,000. And so I have a tremendous hope going forward for activity on the east end and the bike park being enjoyed and being a good economic shot in the arm for the city and what typically is a pretty slow part of the city over there on the east end.
If I might add, I would like to think that that could be reflective of council's investment and efforts with business and community promotion. And so I think we're starting, hopefully, starting to see us reversing that trend of the sales tax revenue slowing and maybe helping ourselves there a little bit.
I sure hope so, and we will be enjoying a marketing effort. I know about March, April timeframe, so, you know, the first quarter, we ought to be seeing some ads for that. At the very least, computer-type banner ads and things like that, at the very least. And Wonder, wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us?
No, Mayor, nothing, nothing besides Andy mentioning his report also that on Monday we're closed.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Same will be closed.
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, another excellent report. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us?
Nothing there.
Okay, well, well, thank you. And then Public Works. We do have one request for action. And do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the letter of agreement for construction administration support between the City of Idaho Springs and JVA Engineering for the Highway 103 Water Main replacement project in the amount of $95,000 from line item 51-72-732.
Thank you, Janine, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second from Lisa. Any in discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Paul, just wanted to check if anything further for us tonight?
Uh, no.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Ed, thank you for your, your report, and I wanted to see if you had anything further for us?
No, thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything.
All right, all right, well, thank you. And under Mayor and Council, the only thing that I have is that we will have another work session and regular meeting on February 24th. And Lisa, I know you had one item, well.
I do. It's not huge, but I heard from three different people over the last week and a half to please, I don't know whose responsibility this is, but on the Wall Street, on Virginia, the Virginia Street construction, I had three different people to me, they did not know the roads were going to be closed, that some people got notification put on the house and some people did not. And then two of the three people that contacted me got stuck and couldn't get out of their house. So there is a request to please, I don't know if it's Better Signage or the construction company or public, I don't know who this belongs to, I'm just passing this along.
We did discuss this a little bit in, in last week's meeting about this, and I knew that there were some folks that did get missed and did not get notified, so you did make a better effort, especially up on Wall Street there to notify Wall Street. I don't think they have put out any flyer on Wall Street.
I didn't see anything.
One was Virginia, two was Wall Street.
We are getting flyers out from Virginia, and we're doing our best to notify. We have 70%, 75% participation rate with the email. We have seventy percent, seventy five percent participation rate with the email blast, so that's been very helpful. And if you're not getting,
Pretty high, actually.
It is really high. It's really good.
I asked, do we have temporary speed bumps? I'd love to invest in a couple of these, and simply because of this, all the traffic is being redirected to Wall Street, and it's a one lane road with no give on either side. You're either hitting cars or you're driving into, or you're driving into someone's house potentially. So, and I'm watch, I sit on my little bike in the morning, and I watch people race. And it's either, some of them are neighbors, and I sent out a little alert to those guys that says, I will call the police. I will take a picture of your car and call the police. And, but it's also the guys that are working down there. So if we could have like some speed bumps that will just slow them down on both the up, you know, coming up from the west and going down to the east, that would be great.
I know we still have some of those older, we had some rubber speed bumps that we had out on Wall Street.
If you put one in front of my house, I will gladly drag it away when we have a snowstorm.
Like a spike strip?
Bing, 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 bing. That's what I want to hear when you try to buy my house. Or you're tired to park.
I'm teasing, of course.
I know.
Well, I won't be able to drag it out of the way, because in order for it to work, we'll have to nail it down into the.
Oh, okay. Whatever you need us to do, we would gladly help you.
But we can put some cones and marker it so that our files can try and bump.
Like go over, yeah.
Right.
Well, thank you. I just, like, I wanted to pass this on, because I heard from three different people, so.
And the other thing that I was going to recommend is, especially on the east end of Wall Street, and there's only five of us, there's only five cars, you know, me and Janine and Dylan and my husband and I, is that we can point the other way without any issue, Chief, because what we have to do now is go into the construction zone, turn around and come back out. And if we were able to just pull in after they're done and face the other way, we wouldn't have that issue. So now we wouldn't have to turn around in people's neighborhoods or in front of their house or in their driveways.
But point east instead of pointing west?
By the way, I do it all the time anyway, so I don't really, I'm not really asking for me, I'm asking it for the other people, because.
I'm lawbreaker over here.
No, I, before I came to my council, I made that a thing on that side of the road, because it's very hard to get traction to go up when you have an ice storm. So it, we should just be able to do it without any problem.
Hey, are you asking about parking the wrong, the wrong way going eastbound?
No, not necessarily, like, the same side of the road, just facing the other way.
Okay.
Going eastbound.
On the north side of the road.
On the north side.
Yeah, on the north side.
So, okay.
It's too dangerous to do it the other way, Andy, because people walk out of their, you know, up in a blind spot. It, I, guys, it is a huge concern. Lisa's getting the calls, I'm not getting the calls, but I am watching the traffic drive kind of wildly out of control up and down that road, so. And I got flipped off by some of the worker guys, because apparently there was no signage that said I can't go through, so I'm waiting, and he's like doing gestures. I will not lie, I made a few gestures myself. So there was a little gesture fight going on, but then I had to back up again in a construction zone in my team of the little car. It's just, it's just kind of a chaotic event up there right now.
It really is chaotic up there, and I do apologize. It's, but it is only temporary. It will be better in the end.
I know that all the time.
All right, does anybody have anything further before I adjourn? Oh, yes, Janine.
I was just curious if there should be something about the business promotions like added to the agenda?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Like, I don't know if a report should be submitted, or at least if like it included us, like an area to get an update on, just as that position is new.
That's a good idea.
There's a survey out right now, too.
I would agree. I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
All right.
And we do get monthly reports.
From Sadie, yeah.
They, they go with the accounts payable, but I'm not sure they would be part of the packet that comes to you all.
Yeah.
So what we do is just make sure the report gets to you in a separate, in another way.
You mean the one that Sadie kind of reads, like reads to us? Yeah, that'd be nice. It'd be public domain, too, so.
Yep, I agree.
There's a meeting Thursday for those that are going to it, right?
There is a meeting Thursday, EDC. And it's going to kick off, I believe, five thirty till eight over at the Teller House. And we're going to talk about all things business related for Gilpin and Clerk Creek County. We have been working jointly. We have a lot in common. And also, there is a leadership breakfast on Friday morning, eight o'clock in the morning until eleven thirty. You can, I know you can find more information on EDC's website, and it was requested that your RSVP if you're coming, just so they have adequate food. Because everybody's welcome. And the parking is at two hundred Teller, I believe. Just past the Teller House, again.
There was a few hours before this meeting, I did send out an update from CCEDC about, about the events coming up.
Oh, good.
There's more to commit to all of councils.
Oh, excellent.
If anyone wants to go, the information should be in your inbox.
All right, very good. Anything further before we adjourn? Hearing nothing. We're adjourned at seven thirty eight. Thank you, everybody.